Healthcare Provider Attraction and Retention Committee Terms of Reference Update. And we have recommended motion, if someone will take that motion, then we'll start with this topic. We need a motion to get her started. Counselor Hamlin?
I'll make the motion as indicated in option one, that council approves of membership changes to healthcare attraction and retention committee terms of reference and approves covering 50% or $5,000 of the operating budget to the committee for 2025 and for 2026. And that council approves that the representatives for First Nations healthcare and for the Maiti settlement healthcare be voting members of the healthcare attraction and retention committee.
Thank you, Counselor Hamlin. This is a case where there's a two-part motion, but the two parts don't contradict each other. Okay, are there any questions or comments on this? Deputy Mayor?
If all First Nations and Maiti settlements send a representative, it's going to be a huge committee. That's only my concern, being representative.
It's a regional committee, so it's just part of the complex. You know, they want to be inclusive. And, yeah, they just want to be inclusive. So whether it's going to be a large committee or middle-sized committee, I tend to think it would be a large one, but that's the committee's business, I guess. They're comfortable with it.
When they join, we ask them for voluntary donation to cover the $10,000.
My only comment on this is that this is one of those topics and issues that the more regional club we can gather under the same umbrella, the better off we'll be. Any further questions or comments on this? The option has read by Counselor Hamlin. All those in favor? Carrie, moving on now, we dealt with item 8.3 and we added item 8.4, electoral boundaries. Now, obviously, the CEO was unable to provide us with the context of this. If you have read today's South Beach News, all the maps are in there. Okay? And it's, at the risk of over summarizing, Lesser Slave Lake constituency disappears and we become part of, well, we become part of a massive one that stretches all the way to the border, will basically become part of the high-level Peace River one, I believe. The thing that concerns me about it is that we're, it seems, and correctly if I'm wrong, those of you who looked at it, we seem to be getting separated from our natural allies. But anyway, Counselor Midlerlein, go ahead.
I just wanted to double-check on that, because as far as, I think you're talking about the Mackenzie riding or whatever, and I thought the Druckley High Prairie would be ending up in Peace Notley?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's what you meant, okay. And so that would put us in with Flair, not only Platte than that. So there's other neighbors, but I, I'm wrong, I'll say it anyways. It seems to me this seems to be a shot at somebody that's no longer a UCP member, but I'm not sure why the province is making the decision, giving some more writings to the cities, taking away from the urbans, because it's not just ours, like there's two writings in the urbans that are going to disappear, or probably in the worlds.
Worlds, yeah.
Yeah, probably two rural writings, and then be increasing four from the urbans. So an addition of two sites. So I know they can play with numbers the way they want, but I'm not necessarily sure if I'm happy the way that we're being treated. And I did see that there were letters of support or non-support from the other municipalities that were attached to some of the documents I've seen. And maybe I do look at that, cobble something back together, also say we're not necessarily pleased by what the UCP or the current provincial government's looking at doing.
Okay, in this particular case, we don't have a recommended option, so we're going to have discussion first and then word motion, okay? Counselor Hamlin, any comments on electoral boundaries?
Yeah, I've been trying to follow what was recommended by the, it's the Alberta Electoral Boundaries Commission, and it sounds like the majority of the MLAs in the north are disagreeing with that recommendation from this commission, because we lose an extra voice in the north.
Any other comments? Counselor Briskie, any comments on the decision?
No, seeing as I agree with Counselor Gerald Hamlin.
Counselor Temple?
We also have to remember that people are blaming the province for this, and it's not the province, the provincial government doing this. This is this commission which is separate, and if you listen to the ministers, they're telling you it wasn't their decision.
Okay.
So that's where we're kind of stuck. We have a commission that probably has no idea what goes on in the north, making decisions. And I agree with Herman and Counselor Herman, that this is probably because our MLA is not in the UCP government.
Counselor Hunter?
Yeah, I'll agree with Counselor Herman, that I don't believe we're being treated fairly, and I'll agree with Counselor Temple, that I don't know what the solution is.
Deputy Mayor?
As our CEO talked to the county CEO, bring up their feelings on this subject, because you guys are attending meetings next week, and I don't know, it's a stronger voice going forward than if you guys. Sure the thought.
Next, yeah, next week is Alberta municipalities in Calgary, then the RMA, the Poland weekend in Edmonton. CEO, any comments?
No, but I'm sure we're going to hear it definitely at the RMA conference, and the county is going to be with us, so I'll find out then. And I might find out tomorrow when I attend their council meeting tomorrow morning.
You have to be careful on this topic, that you're not trying to beat on the wrong horse. The electoral commission doesn't have the same motivation that the politicians or the cabinet has. I've got some experience with commissions like that, and they truly are relatively independent from the political milieu around. I don't think it really matters whether we have an MLA in which party. Having said that, I have to agree that we need to raise our voice so that the electoral, the members of the commission will have cause to take a second look. And therefore, I think we need a strongly worded motion that we can all support, that we can send to the commission, and that the CEO and I and Counselor Midlerlein, who are going to Calgary next week, can bring along with us. Okay? So remember, it's easy to say, well, this is the government or whatever. There's often a retired judge or two, and I'm not talking about a provincial judge, but a court of appeal, or what used to, what is now King's Bench judges are on that. So we have to bring it to their attention. So I'm looking at the CEO to provide us with at least some draft wording of a strongly worded motion that we can adopt tonight. What's your suggestion?
For tonight or for the next meeting?
No, we want to get this nailed down, because you and I and Counselor Midlerlein are going to Calgary before the next meeting. Go ahead, Counselor Hamlin.
So I had started writing a motion, and I'll just read it, make the motion, to have administration send a letter to the Alberta Electoral Boundaries Commission on our behalf, disagreeing with the proposed changes for the new electoral boundaries for the Lesser Slave Lake riding. That would be my motion.
Draft it tomorrow, send it out to Counselor.
Yeah, other than don't have, as the administrator doing this, we're doing that. Okay? Otherwise, they'll interpret it simply as, that's his view, we want it to be our view.
Counselor. Can I suggest a friendly amendment to your motion, and that would be to have direct the CEO to draft a letter for the mayor's signature to sign on behalf of the mayor of the council of town in High Prairie. That would be a little better?
Yeah, we'll clean up, we know what you want, we'll clean up the wording, and you'll see it in the next minutes and be dazzled by our ability to clean it up. However, are we, okay, we're saying we're opposed to the maps we see now. Are we going to suggest an alternative or a reason why we're opposed? Just saying no to them isn't going to get you anywhere. Go ahead, Counselor Hamlin.
So for the reason we're opposed to it would be if their proposed changes reduces representation in the north by one seat.
Okay, I ask another question. For those of you who looked more closely at this, I was looking at the maps in the South Beach News, and they were too faint for my old eyes to read carefully. Where do the First Nations and the Maiti settlements to the east of us wind up?
Grand Prairie still sends up over that way, east of us.
We lose everything east of us.
Yeah.
It's in another way.
So is that, can we say that it's separating us from our natural family of communities or some wording like that?
And include the fact that they have First Nations and Maiti settlements involved in that, which would then, you know, take us out of the picture completely.
Okay, do the, do the boundaries right now as being proposed separate us from whitefish and pealine? Yes. So it's separating us from all of our Aboriginal partners?
Yes.
I like that, yeah, that's good. That's a good, powerful line to put into a letter.
Yes.
That is separating us from our Aboriginal partners.
Allies.
Allies?
Who've been partners for a long time.
Partners.
Neighbors.
Allies are friends of convenience, these are more than that.
They're neighbors.
Go ahead.
If I could add maybe just one thing there for the CEO to look at, is to check with Amy Muni and with RMA, to see if right now, if they got anything on the resolutions on the table for those two meetings coming up, because they probably do have one or two, and maybe they can give me some suggestive wording on that.
Sure.
And then we would also want to maybe look at whoever the voting members are at the Muni to vote in favor of stopping or to move the heels.
Yeah, I think that the three of us should be equipped with copies of this letter that we can generously distribute and edit and become. Okay, let's go around the table, anything else you want to add to this topic? Anybody? All those in favor of this brilliantly worded motion? Oh, I'm a cynic, aren't I in my old age? Carrie? Okay. Moving on with the agenda then to 13.1, the CEO's report and action list.
We are now on page 35. So a little bit different than last week's CEO update. We provided, over the last two, three months, you know, the former council has provided us with requests and direction, and I have identified the, and we've identified where we are with these action items. We haven't done all of them yet, but we will take off the ones that are completed for the next meeting, a regular council, but this gives you the status of this. So between, over the past week, we've just been organizing post-election and then organizing reports for council for this meeting.
Okay, I need a motion to get into this topic? Counselor Hunter?
Move to receive for information.
Okay. Any questions of the CEO on his report? Sorry, you're going to call this report for next time around?
That's it.
Any other questions? Are there any specific questions on any specific item in the half dozen pages provided? Hearing none on the motion to receive for information, which is, no action, stick it in the file, all those in favor? Carrie, moving on now to the correspondence. The first item is the elders banquet and the request for a financial contribution. We don't have a motion worded on that, but go ahead, Counselor Hamlin.
I wasn't going to make a motion, but I am going to declare a conflict of interest on this. Although, and I wrote it down, although being a board member of a nonprofit organization does not constitute a pecuniary interest, as the current president of the Hyperianated Friendship Center, there may be a perceived conflict of interest in the community, so I'm recusing myself from this agenda.
Excellently worded, Counselor. I'm giving the room. Before we do anything else, what is past practice? Does, I know in the past we have supported events like this, what is past practice?
I'd have to look up how much we contributed to their banquet last year. I don't know how that off the top of my head.
Any of the other retired CEOs, but minds able to remember?
There's, sorry if I can. We do have, the former council has not spent all of its community grants, if you will, and this could come out of that pocket of money. So, you know, if you want to contribute 500 or 200 or whatever you feel is comfortable with.
Deputy Mayor, do you remember? I don't.
I don't remember any of these in the past, but I do know it referring to the policy the council had, that was the one that we're going to have to take a look at and do some work with, because that policy also gave, each counselor would give a certain amount of there, but they had to share that pot of money, and so it would go around, and if every seven were happy to split bucks themselves, they'd each take one seventh out, or sometimes we'd get five approving it, then you were paying.
I'm getting a headache already.
I know, it is a hell of a mess, that's the best way I can say it, and it's something we need to look at in the future, but it's not that I disagree with the giving of rights.
Considering Counselor Hamlin's refusal, Counselor Midlerlein, please word a motion with a dollar figure in it.
I don't think I'm comfortable doing that, sorry.
Oh, okay, who's comfortable in doing it? Okay, I'll do it. I move that we support the boarding third anniversary banquet honoring elders with a contribution of $500. Questions or comments on that? None, all those in favor, raise your hands. All those opposed, carry. Okay, Counselor Hamlin, please rejoin us. Request for a representative on our community education committee, I believe, because we have done that in the council appointments, and that person is Counselor Temple. Moving on to the Willow Lodge and Member Municipality Letter of Support. A letter of support for Hart River Housing Proposed Project, the expansion of the Red Willow Lodge in Valadun. For those of you who don't know, the Hart River Foundation, at least that portion of it that's administered out of High Prairie goes all the way from Canusa to Fox Creek and Flair. Any question? We don't have motions for these, so we'll have a bit of a chat first and then form a motion if we see a need for one. I believe they're just asking for a letter of support. What do you think with this? That's me. Well, dive into the deep end then, Counselor Midlerlein. What are you going to say to this?
Give me a moment. I need to talk to them to find out how quick they need, but I think providing much support is not necessarily indicating for.
Okay, brochure, a letter of support, questions on it? All those in favor? Carrie, moving on to facilitation. This is the Kraus Development Incorporated. Personally, I don't think these, this kind of request should even be on our agenda, CEO. This is simply somebody looking for work. My, I'll take a motion then. Receive for information, Deputy Mayor, move. This one gets stuck in the file, all those in favor? Carrie. The written and verbal reports, I circulated my report for pro work. I believe it's in your email, I wrote it this afternoon. I think others have as well.
Worship. I did pass the CEO staff copy of it, and I'm not sure if everybody got a copy of my report and the dates. Just wanted to confirm that, so my report's there.
And who has the copy?
Staff's given it with a copy.
So I've got it somewhere.
We have a copy that you put, but it was basically straightforward, because we went to the training sessions, et cetera, so.
Then we give it to you. I'll read it. Before we finish the reports, we had added an item on to the council information, the Hart River 25-point system. That's right. Let's do that one before we leave it. We've received from Darla Christwell, who's the manager of the Hart River. They're basically asking our support to maintain their 25-point system. And it appears that the basic principle of their 25-point system is that they want to advantage the working poor, not to the disadvantage of others, but simply to recognize that they are working and that the others are on social assistance. I think that's the basics. Give you a chance to look at this one. What do we want to do with this? What are they asking, a letter of support? Letter of support? Yes, they're asking for us for a letter of support to retain their 25-point system, the 25-point system which had been part of their original ministerial order, which now appears to have been dropped from the list. Counselor Midlerlein?
I would make that motion to provide a letter of support for them for the 25-point system, maintain that.
Okay, any questions or comments on that? Comments opposed or supporting, whatever. Ready for the question? All those in favor of sending a letter of support, say aye. Carrie? Sorry, I shouldn't have cut that one earlier. Going on to the written verbal report. Counselor Midlerlein has circulated something. Has anybody else written one? I thought there was another one. I don't remember.
I did it, but I asked Wendy to put it in there. The last meeting of the month.
Okay. This is reporting on what happened as far as you're concerned in October, since we competed that one.
Counselor Midlerlein, carry on with my report then. I have no verbal updates for this report, it was very simple, straightforward, and that's what I'd like to move my report through information.
Okay, I'm going to do everything with an umbrella for everybody, okay? Okay. Any, any desire to report, Counselor Hamlin?
Yes, I did do a written report, and I'll make copies if everybody wants one for the month of October, and.
Please give a copy to the clerk, and she'll simply include it in the file.
Okay, thank you. And since our last meeting, I just wanted to say that I have attended the elected officials' orientation seminar facilitated by George Cupp at St. Isidore, and the Munis 101 training session in Grand Prairie, plus I completed the cybersecurity training.
Thank you. Counselor Briskie, anything to add to your unthen report? Other than you attended the meetings and the workshop?
Exactly, yeah.
Counselor Temple? Nothing to add. Counselor Hunter?
I don't have anything to add.
Deputy Mayor? Okay, and I just circulated by, I just circulated by email this afternoon to all of you. I really enjoyed George Cupp. It's amazing that a presenter can just stand there and talk to you, and nobody gets up to leave. Nobody, nobody had to go to the washroom and then slip up to the fart and budge and leave. The man is legendary. And the poor people in Grand Prairie had a very hard act to follow, but in fact, it was quite informative. And I think a lot of us probably enjoyed the opportunity to meet counselors from other municipalities as well, and that was, that was well worth it as well. Other than that, I think we're making a good start. You'll notice that I'm trying to formalize the meetings and everything else, I think is the better way to do it, so that we're addressing the clerk as the clerk, the CEO as the CEO, and ourselves as counselors and mayor, deputy mayor. That, by the way, as the CEO pointed out to me that room, is still less formal than the county operates. Okay? Having said that, I will entertain a motion to accept the reports of town council for information. Move by Counselor Midlerlein, any comments and questions? All those in favor? Carrie, you know that I don't care for having minutes with seven different umbrellas, that's what God made umbrellas for. We're now coming to the end of the, just one thing to the clerk. I would appreciate if the agenda would have a rolling listing of the future topics that counselors would like to have on future town council meetings, and that way we can sort it, keep track of it, and perhaps provide a little psychological motivation to get them done. I have a topic for a future one, and it's actually the one that raised by Counselor Hunter. I do think we need to talk about the website. I have had, like Counselor Hunter, other people talking to me about the difficulty of finding anything, finding everything on. I have had, like Councilor Shunter, other people talking to me about the difficulty of finding anything, finding everything on there that's up to date. So I think that should be a topic for future consideration. Um. And Councilor Poriski wandered roads and sidewalks on from last time, so I imagine he still wants that. Councilor Temple? Any topics in the future you want us at regular council to address? Nope, none. Councilor Shunter?
Yeah, I had a concerned citizen show up at my store this week. Um, my understanding is the, uh. County has a bylaw surrounding, uh, when a tractor pulls out of a muddy, muddy field and it gets mud all over the road. You know, that's a hazard to vehicles and motorcycles and whatever else traveling down the highway a hundred kilometers an hour. My understanding is the county has a bylaw preventing that. Um, the citizens said that, uh, driving in front of McSteel, and I don't want to pick on McSteel, McSteel. But they said that driving in front of McSteel, McSteel has been tracking an awful lot of mud on the road and I just want to make sure that there's no, uh, safety issue with, with that. And if there is a safety issue, again, not picking on McSteel because they're great for the community, um, that, 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 that safety issue might need to be addressed in some form. Um, onto another note, I, uh. I, I, I talked briefly with Mr. Joy about, uh, policy regarding. My, my concern is that when, uh, the CEO or a town manager brings a recommendation forward to council, I don't want that recommendation to be the recommendation because somebody at the town got slipped as had concert tickets or somebody had their dinner paid for. And I know that other municipalities have a policy in place for preventing that sort of thing. And my understanding is here in town we do not. Um, I want to be, I want to feel confident that the recommendation being brought forward from admin to council is, is in fact the best for the community and it's not being brought forward because, uh. Because of some form of bribe that, that took place. And then the last thing is, uh, again, social media. Um, so I talked a little bit about that, um, earlier tonight, but, uh. My thought process is that if people aren't willing to sign up for an email newsletter, they're certainly not going to download it now. And I think we have, uh.
No, that's not, that's an inclusion that doesn't necessarily bear out.
Yeah, perhaps, yeah. That's just, that's just my opinion and it generational, yeah, maybe.
Here we go. Here we go.
We're gonna, we're gonna ostracize him, aren't we?
I, my, my personal opinion, I, I do think that we have, uh. Before we start looking at new tools to, uh, to, uh, expand, expand our communication network, I think we need to make sure that we're utilizing the tools we have. And if you take a look at the website right now, the, there's bylaws that, uh, I think are in fact that aren't posted on the website and there's bylaws posted on the website that are no longer in effect. And I'm sure policies are the same thing, that the policies on the website aren't necessarily, um, up to date. Um, if you scroll to the bottom of the website, there is a, um, signup box to, to share your email with the town. And, uh, so I've always received town newsletters to my email and I was under the assumption that everybody who was signed up for e-billing experienced the same. Um, so I, I would think that the majority of residents, uh, the majority of households maybe receive that, uh, that monthly newsletter. And, uh, expanding that newsletter, it might be, uh, might be, uh, a, a good thing to do. Um, also at the bottom of the website, if you click on, uh, there's a poll, there's a poll box and if you click on the button to, uh, take the poll, it doesn't take you anywhere. So. But, but there's, there's so much in place and if we, uh, if we focus some attention on, uh, keeping it up to date or getting it up to date and then, and then we can look at doing more. But, uh, if, if we can't, uh, if we can't keep what we have up to date, I don't see any benefit to spreading, spreading admin even thinner. And then, uh, economic development, but we could talk about that on later date when, uh. When the, I think it's the Regional Development Committee, when they've had their first meeting and the council has received a report back from them. And I think we're waiting on a, uh. On a Deloitte report too, right?
Yeah. That, that, uh, that'll be. Certainly by February or March, we'll have a report. In January, they're, in January, in January, they're gonna involve the community. And to get their input. Now we're approaching Christmas, but they are giving us updates weekly to so we were, but yeah, I'll ask tomorrow when the next committee meeting will be for economic default.
Yeah.
Good question.
It's, uh, economic development's high on my list, but I think right now it's a hurry up and wait kind of thing.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, any job for the future?
Make it easier in our administration.
Um, I need to ask a question. How do you want to be one? I've already provided the reports on the compensation review. Uh, how do you want me to put it in the agenda or when?
The next.
The next one?
I'm, I'm assuming that we have now gotten sufficient handle on the context and the innards of this topic and now. And the market adjustment piece will appear on the next regular council meeting.
But you don't want to see the full reports again?
God, no, please. I don't kill them in the trees. Okay, anything else to add for future meetings? Comments about this meeting? None? The agenda being complete, I declare this meeting adjourned. At eight oh nine. Be good. You have these hours to take home or whatever?
Take them home.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're up to date.
Yeah.
If I leave it right here, well, let's stay right here.
Nobody will steal it, I guarantee.
Well, those are two thousand, but there's.
It's nice to have enough to date.